We're supposed to be meeting with me at 2:00 today, but he's still at the Half to Rose Bridge Tunnel. And I don't know when he'll get here. And Bobby Dyer is running a little bit late. Folks, you just also had a letter passed out to you. I'm very, I'm saddened by this letter, but I'm happy. It's obviously the retirement letter of our great city manager. And he has finally decided to pull the trigger and retire. And this is going to be going across the city as we speak right now. And, you know, I ask that you read the letter at your earliest convenience. Jim, I can't say enough about the great job you've done for this city. You'll see the letter 24 years. That's kind of miraculous in your line of work.
It's unheard of.
And it is unheard of, but it was unheard of because we had the superstar, superstar, and it's, but you've got to stay busy the next five months now. He's going to stay with us through the end of the year. His contract's over November, if you recall. But he's agreed to stay through the end of the year. In closed session today, we will be talking about some proposals to hire a headhunter and get that process going. But from the bottom of my heart, Jim, thank you for the super job you've done. There's no question in my mind that you love the city. And you have certainly made quite, well, a lot of, it's going to be hard for someone to fill his shoes. No question about it. And we're going to miss that.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Well, I didn't expect that, but thank you very much, Mayor. And I do look forward to--
You weren't laughing because you're leaving. You were laughing, you were a great job--
You're that glad to get rid of me? No.
That's what it was for.
Thank you very much. And I look forward to working with you over the next five and a half months. We've got a lot of stuff to get done.
That's right. And that's what we're going to do. That's add to the next five months. Pedal to the metal, folks. Got a lot of stuff to get done. We'll go ahead and get started with the African American Cultural Center briefing. Dr. Amelia Ross Hammond is making this presentation, and we look forward to it, ma'am. We're glad to have you here today.
Now I know what it feels like to be in this seat.
Can I interrupt you just one second?
Yes.
I hope you all have noticed we have some scout troops with us. They're going to be here for a few minutes during the informal session because the gallery, they can't make the formal session. But this is troop 417, and we welcome them. Glad to have you all with us.
Thank you.
Okay, Amelia, it's all yours. Thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon, colleagues, council members, troops, and many other guests. Before I get started, I would like to at least recognize some of our community business people who are here with us and some of the board. We have over to my right, Linda Bright, Dr. Linda Bright, who is the first vice president of the executive board. We have Mr. Hugh Green, who is the member of the executive board. We have Ms. Venus Marshall, who is chairwoman of the Virginia Beach African American Political Action Council. And we have Mr. Gerald Daniels, who is vice president of Lake Edwards Civic League. Okay, we're ready. As you can see, we have been talking about having an African American Cultural Center for some time. And once I became council member, visiting the different communities, many of the elders wanted to see this. So as you can see, we've found out that there are over 32 museums, but only four of them are African American centered. And what we're looking at is the African American Cultural Center will be a place where local residents and their visitors can learn more about the richness and diversity of the African American experience relating to their lives historically, culturally, spiritually. The center will transcend race and unite the history of many older communities by sharing stories that shape the fabric of the city of Virginia Beach and Princess Anne County. As you know, they were both won before Virginia Beach came through. And we have many communities dating back to the 1600s where we have African Americans participating. It will highlight the contributions of African Americans to the community. In that line, I began meeting and putting together, talking one at a time with different community members and business leaders to form our mission, our goal, and our vision. As you can see before you, our mission, to collect, preserve, interpret, and celebrate Virginia Beach and Princess Anne County's African American history, culture, and community dating from mid-1600s to the present, and to inform and educate the public about their achievements in business, politics, religion, civic organization, and their arts, to include regional African American history. There's an African proverb that says, "If a village does not have knowledge of its family generation, it is like a tree without roots." Our goal is to create an opportunity for those who would love to learn more about African American culture and to explore and revel in its history, to reiterate the important role of African Americans and share how essential African American culture and history is to our city. It would be a center to showcase the struggles of African Americans for civil rights and how they have impacted freedom struggles regionally and around the world, and to build partnerships with African American historic sites and cultural centers in the region. Next, you can see we have an organization structure. We are a 501(c)(501(c) nonstop corporation with at least an 11-member board of directors and four offices. We have our executive board, legal advisors, honorary board, and community advisory board, which actually shows the diversity and commitment of the community and the volunteers to this cause. Our executive board, let you read that through, project director, Jim Banks, Dr. Linda Bright, who's our first vice president, Wanda Cooper, attorney for Cooper's Law Firm, Dr. Michael Daniels, who is pastor of Enoch Baptist Church, Ms. Cheryl Davidson, who's a mortgage analyst for Town Bank, Kevin Duffin, who's an attorney and a parliamentarian, Hugh Green, our financial advisor, Shannon Kendrick, regional director from Congressman Scott Richel's office, an attorney, Marcus Crivin, from Crivin Law Offices, and Addie Wright Camason, who is our president and unfortunately could not be with us at this time due to her death in her family, and also Bruce Williams of Bruce Marketing, who is the second vice president. We have an honorary board member. Now, our executive board member are the people who are going to help us raise funds, and they know that already, and they had to agree to that. Our honorary board members and advisors help us, you know, find where the deep pockets and also we hope they will donate themselves. Many are people who are well-known in the community. We have Mr. E.L. Hamm, who is CEO of Hamm and Associates. We have Mr. Gary McCullum, business owner and former VP for Cox Communication. We have Mr. Bruce Smith, NFED Hall of Fame, and Dr. Carolyn Williams, who is executive director of FOTA from One Hand to Another, Pharrell Williams Foundation, and former councilwoman, Louisa Strahan, who served in her state. Our legal advisor and special friends of the African American Cultural Center, Mr. Morris Fine of Fine Fine Museum in McCracken, Mr. Guy Tower, who made sure we mentioned that he was a retired attorney, and Mr. Louis Webb III, and Mr. David Kama of Kaufman and Conolly. Our community advisory board, we have Tony Bailey representing from Lake Edwards. We have Reverend E. Ray Cox, pastor interdenomination, Jerry Jennifer Estey, who is one of our historians, Michelle Gilliam, and she is from the Downing Groves Culture Arts Center and very interested in working with us. I've also gained membership with the National African American Museum at Smithsonian, so they will be shepherding what we're doing. And we have Deborah Grant from Edwards, Edna Hendricks, who wrote, the author of The African American in Princess Anne, Andrew Jackson, he has African American Leadership Forum, C-TAC Civic League, Sandra Smith Jones, who's former school board member, Bishop Rudolph B. Lewis from New Light Community, and Becky LeVos, who's a jazz artist. And we also have Teron Rogers, another faith-based from Ebenezer, Donna Speller-Turner, Juan Turnus, from the director of African American Culture of Excellence, Barbara Williams, who's one of the graduates of Union, Kempsville High School, Rudolph Wilson, political from Norfolk State, Carl Wright, president of Virginia Beach and WAACP, and we're also having a representative from Virginia Wesleyan College. So as you can see right in there, we're trying to cover the entire gamut. And now I'm going to do a tag team by asking my team person, Mr. Doug Smith, who is deputy city manager, to take over from here for a minute.
Thank you, Amelia. We're glad to have you.
Thank you, Dr. Ross Hammond. And certainly, Mayor, members of council, it's always a pleasure to be in front of you. My task is really a fairly quick one, which is to give this some geographic context and to talk a little bit about the site plan and the building. And as you can see in terms of the location, the map in the corner is really to let you know that the site has easy access to transit and not too far ultimately from the light rail line. Really, the location, just to remind you all, is really up here. And what we liked, you may recall, we talked at your planning session, two-day planning session, we were looking for a site that was obviously publicly controlled, but that also had some geographic relevance. And you've got, this site is located right among six of the 12 historically black neighborhoods in Virginia Beach. They include Beechwood, you can see them up there, Beechwood, Burton Station, Greystown, Lake Smith, Newsome Farm, and Reedtown. So we feel pretty good in terms of the geographic context. The site is obviously what's marked up here, bounded in the red borders. It's 4.8 acres. Spent a fair bit of time, one of the things we wanted for Dr. Ross Hammond and her team was to have something that they could go public with and start to get public support, but also some that they could take to folks that are potential donors and show them that, you know, this is what our vision is and where it's located. And we've had a couple of iterations, but ultimately landed on an entrance that comes off of Newtown Road where Newtown and Diamond Springs meet. And I'll talk to you a little bit more about the components of each, but again, a 4.8-acre site. The building itself is really interesting in that you have this central space that is really modeled after an African palaver hut, which I'm learning is a place that is a community gathering spot, a place where celebrations take place, where conflict resolution takes place, where mentoring for the next generation takes place. And somebody thought that that was an interesting piece, and then to have other facilities that sort of are other components that come off of that hut. We're talking about as much as a 25,000-square-foot building with meeting rooms, classrooms, places to see art, but also not only visual art, but also the performing arts. Would also have that multipurpose room, that banquet hall that again could be that public gathering space, and again, the opportunity for exhibit space, but also obviously restrooms and perhaps even a souvenir shop. One of the things that you want, that may be a little bit hard to see, but I want you to pay attention to what happens on the outside because we think that the space outside the facility is just as important. So a lot of attention will be paid to the ability to have walking trails and natural areas and place where folks can gather and be outdoors. One of the things we'll do is really understand the trees that are there and try and preserve the ones that we can. And we think that is really important, and those that we have to take down, we'd obviously want to replace. But want to spend a lot of time with improved pedestrian connection all around there. And again, I think, as I mentioned earlier, want to use that access off of Newtown Road. Also, the basketball courts are an important amenity to that neighborhood, and we want to make sure it's real clear that those aren't going anywhere and that those stay in place. And so what does the city get out of it? One of the things we talked about, there is a lot of African American history in this region, and I've learned, you know, since the disposition of Fort Monroe, you know, all the things that have happened over at Fort Monroe over the years and how they're starting to really tell that story. And we want to make sure that we have the opportunity to tell the story of African American history within Virginia Beach and how it fits in the context of what's happening in the region. At the same time, you know, development is important, and development for, that could connect and be a benefit to really both the Burton Station and Newtown SGAs, we think is a real benefit. Obviously, when you're building a facility of this size and magnitude, you've got the construction jobs and they come with it. But ultimately, there's, somebody's going to need to run this facility. We're going to have artists that come and go, that show their creations, that perform in the facility. So we think those are neat opportunities. So ultimately, it becomes another asset in our menu of tourism offerings. In terms of where we go from here, we think that a memorandum of understanding between the city and the nonprofits is important. Really, what that would say, we would draft that up for you with y'all's concurrence that says, you know, the city's going to offer the land, we're going to put the land in, we're going to help with some of the initial planning. And obviously, they're going to go out and do the fundraising that will not only, that will bring the vision frankly to reality. Obviously, a lot of community involvement, clearly you've seen by the community advisory board and just the sheer number of people that have already come on board as volunteers. There's been a great deal of community conversation, but there needs to be more. And so obviously, that will continue. Staff, Barry Frankenfield's office in particular, has really done a fabulous job of helping us create a conceptual plan and a vision that we can show. But that needs to get a lot more detail, and that detail will offer up an opportunity to say what the real expense, you know, what the real cost would be. So we'll want to refine the capital budget and ultimately the operating budget for what this facility becomes. So at some point, sooner than later, we'll need to engage the services of a design team. And one of the things we talked about, I presented pieces of the pending cultural plan that, you know, that Duncan Webb and Emily LeBeaus and those folks are putting together for the city. And we'll bring that to council probably late summer, early fall, but we've asked the consultant to make sure that this African American Cultural Center is a component of that plan. And one of the things I think you'll like about that plan is it makes recommendations, but it also talks about where similar things like this are happening in other communities. So we'll get some examples of similar facilities in other communities. So with that said, Dr. Ross Hammond, I think I'll let you close.
Thank you, Doug. Amelia?
And this is the rendering that we're looking at. For the center will be two-story, and that concept of the palaver hut is right in the middle, and it will be one that can showcase even the journeys. And we want it to be like a cultural learning center, enriching. This is not a playground. This is something that is important and needed. So before I go further, I did see and would like to recognize Mr. Carl Wright, president of NWACP, who has come in support.
We're glad to have you here, Carl.
Okay. And council members, as you remember, we discussed the development of an African American Cultural Center in February at our two-day leadership and strategic planning workshop. I was so pleased that the council agreed that this would be one of our top priorities for 2015. As you have seen by this afternoon's presentation and our team tag work, because it's important that we're all on board, many people have been working hard to develop a strategy for making this vision a reality. I am overwhelmed by the depth of the community's support and so pleased by the commitment of so many volunteers. We now have a vision, mission, and goals along with conceptual building plan that we can take to the community to begin raising funds to make this dream a reality. So this afternoon, I'm asking you, my peers, to direct the staff to draft a memorandum of agreement that will memorialize this council's commitment to provide a land for our African American Cultural Center.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have some questions, Barbara?
Well, I would just say that nobody's worked any harder on this. And Amelia, I know this has been her dream since she's come on the council, and she's really been talking about developing a cultural center such as this, and it's just so great to see that it's come together and that we've identified the land. And if we need someone to ask that we move forward, I would be glad to do that and ask that we have this--
I'd like to second that. Well, we really don't need a motion. We're just guiding them through--
Yeah, right.
You're on the MOU, so we're trying to get done. Yeah, yeah. Let's go ahead and--
Can I just ask what it might say? I mean, if we're going to--
Doug?
--have a memorandum of-- Generally, it's going to commit that the city would put the land in the deal into the project and that the nonprofit would go through the process of raising the funds and would just sort of lay out sort of what that looks like and--
And the nonprofit's going to run the center?
Correct.
Right.
So really, the city's commitment is obviously your political backing, but your offering of the land for the project.
I think it's a really great spot for it.
I think it is.
It's perfect. It's an ideal location. But before we say we're going to move on with it, I just kind of wanted to know--
Amelia, I think you got enthusiastic support.
Oh, great, great. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much.
All right.
The next thing, folks, is sea level rise discussion. John, you brought this up as--
I did.
--both the councilmembers. And also, we received something in our package, I believe, over the weekend.
I did.
Yeah, just, I wanted to make sure everyone had that if they needed it.
Well, I don't have any nice product like Amelia does, but my issue isn't so much on the solutions, because I don't think we're far away from doing what all those need to be. But I do want to thank, because I think this is something that we were lacking in engaging with the public, is a comprehensive overview, and I'll come back and talk about that in a minute. But, you know, I have no recall, I've heard Dr. Cook on more than one occasion say that the biggest issue that Hampton Road faces is not transportation, but in fact is the impact and the financial implications of sea level rise and soils subsidence when it comes to capital costs. And he has said that on frequent occasions. So, and of course, I think many of you have probably engaged your neighbors or maybe you yourself have been engaged as the FEMA map has changed the flooding zone category of your property and seen what that means in terms of annual premiums. I've heard $1,000, I heard a person looking to buy a house over in Chick's Beach area, and the Lloyds of London cost, independent of their homeowners' insurance, was $8,000 a year. So there are, and I think that's a missing dimension in this discussion. So if I had to say a piece that's missing in this matrix is an understanding of what is happening in the insurance industry in these areas and where people are not willing to write insurance at all. And it's pretty significant. And if you try to change your policy, you're finding out you can't get someone else to write it other than who you have. So be careful what you do. And I think that's a piece, Mr. Spoor, that we really need. And I think having a roundtable with the insurance industry would be very educational, I think, for the council to understand where they're at, why their actuaries see the risk of why they see them. Because one of the things that I didn't see as I went through all this, as we look at the strategies that we take, we need to make sure, how will the actuaries and the people who assess these from the insurance industry perspective, look at those remediations? Will they have any impact on how they score and risk and assign the cost for premiums in our area? Because those are the things we should be looking at, the things that have the biggest, because then you're trading off one expense for another expense, and either way, you're paying, but at least somewhere you're getting protection versus here, you're just getting exposure. But you're getting coverage should your property be damaged. I'd rather have my property be protected than exposed to damage. So I think that's a piece we need to look at. And going with that, as you walk through each of these things, you can start, but they all have dollar signs behind them, and they're all going to relate to capital borrowing. So as we look at our new debt policy, which I did not support because I think we took the wrong approach, but nonetheless, we have it, our population growth isn't growing that quickly. These are big dollar value things. So as we start looking at our CIP, we shouldn't, we should be holding back and reserving borrowing capacity to make sure that when the time comes, we have the borrowing capacity without having to change our policy and impact our bond rating to finance these projects, which may not be identified in detail for two or three more years, but we know they're going to be in the hundreds of millions of dollars to do. And that's something we know. So we need to make sure in our CIP project that we're not programming all our borrowing capacity, and we need to create a place marker, in my opinion, as we do for other things, in what's 30 or 20, or my view, it should be 50. But we should be banking borrowing capacity against what we think our revenues are to ultimately be our local share, or in some cases, maybe all our share, to get these and make sure that we have a way without impacting our overall fiscal capacity, we have the borrowing capacity to do what I think. And it may cause us to go back and look at other public projects that if we can't protect them, why are we building them? I think that's a question I think we need to ask ourselves in terms of phasing, what is the higher priority? And the thing I've mentioned here consistently is, this cannot be done on the backs of the storm water management fee. It just can't happen. So we, so I think that public education process is going to mean, if you want to do this and have this capacity, maybe rather than renovating schools, maybe we'll have to be building that copper dam at Lynnhaven. I mean, I don't know, but these are the choices. And I don't think that that came a lot at the retreat or in our CIP. It's kind of like, well, we know this time bomb's out there, but it's really much closer than we think. And I think when I look at, talk to homeowners and I talk about how their premiums have been adjusted and will continually to be adjusted, I think this is a true, good business decision. And I think without the insurance industry's participation and understanding that, I don't think we can make the compelling business case and have that longer-term, Mr. Mayor, conversation with our residents that we have some tough choices and we can't do everything, I think, that's in the current CIP and also address what I think has to be done relative to our flooding issues. And I think even flooding issues that aren't related to sea level rise still can't be, all be balanced on the backs of the storm water management fee. Matter of fact, when we adopted the fee, the storm, the seawall was already up. We did that during my first term on city council with the Army Corps of Engineers. And now we're maintaining the seawall at a storm water management fee, and clearly, that's not storm water management. That clearly is damage control from sea level, from wave action. So I think we have to take a more comprehensive look at how we distribute the cost of these projects. That's the other point. So it's allocation of capital and reserving borrowing capacity for sea level rise. I think we need to have this engagement with the insurance industry to kind of figure out which projects, and it probably will give us the biggest return on protecting our residents. We have four watersheds, as Barbara well knows, and they all take different solutions. I don't know which one's the highest priority. That's hopefully something some of this analysis would do. But going back and walking through, and I really do appreciate this list, this was excellent, is I see a lot of regional stuff going, and we're going to have an appendices. For example, on the FEMA, regional hazard mitigation, we're going to have our own chapter, and it talks about we're working on things. But I would hope that before something's submitted on our behalf, that the council could be briefed in more detail and have a substantive discussion. So before someone thinks that Virginia Beach has committed something to these larger regional groups, that at least we would have had our consent, that we would know what someone's obligating us to do. I think those are good effort. I don't want to be involved in the staff's work, but before we say this is the final draft of represent Virginia Beach, I would, I would like, I think all members here would like to know what that is and how we're resourcing it, because I think all these things to me seem to carry dollars with them. I was very pleased to see the pumping stations, but I would hope that we're, on the 10-year storm events, we're rescaling that for some period, 2050, 2060, and some reasonable estimation of what we think would be the elevation of the storm. And so we'd be building those more than just a 10-year thing, that we'd be building them something differently. And, but I think that's the kind of thing we do, you do a little bit at a time, that reduces your risk. I thought that was excellent. But I do think we have to, how we make those things wider, watertight, so they can operate even when they're submerged, that's really doable. That's not as expensive as you might think. Some rings are watertight. So I know it's doable, but that's the kind of things, I wanted to bring this attention as I shared my letter, email I shared with all of you with the Hanson, is there's a lot of homework to be done here, but in the next two years, I think, but then this thing's going to be, well, now where's the money? And I want to make sure we haven't got to the point where now we have no borrowing capacity or we're not in a position to have the money. So let's start putting some money, borrowing capacity away, so that when the time comes and we can start having a discussion with the public. But first and foremost, I would think the highest priority in this is that insurance roundtable and understanding how the-- roundtable and understanding how the insurance industry is assessing the risk, because you can have all the FEMA flood maps you want and all the studies you want, but in the end, the people who underwrite risk are gonna give you your best insight as to why they think what they think, and what is it looking forward, what do we expect to see in those rising premiums? And that gives us a great ability then to engage the public on the trade-off between, we make these investments, just like we did with fire in the very beginning, back in the old county days, right? Drop down our computer fire rating, we do down insurance. What can we get on the insurance side where people can see where the balance is? And that was my reason for bringing it up, and that concludes my remarks.
And Rosemary, you wanted to say something before?
I probably should know the answer to this, but I don't, so, and maybe there are other people out there who don't know either, so I'm gonna ask it anyway. Knowing that this, that water is rising, slowly, but it is rising, have we, are we adjusting our building codes, not just for our own projects, but for anyone else building, commercial or housing or anything else? Have we looked into changing our building codes to be raising them up?
Yeah, and there's a comprehensive set of things that can be done, and I think council took the first step when you raised the building elevation by two feet to require higher elevation of the habitable floor area. But we had a meeting with the Corps of Engineers last week, and I think this is a very timely topic, and I'm glad John brought it up. You know, and their assessment is, and they're in the study phase at this point, and they've got some funding from Congress to look at six major studies around Hampton Roads. That's about a three-year process to get that work done. Once they know what some of the solutions are, then I think where we're gonna really have to focus is, what Mr. Moss is talking about, is how do you pay for this stuff? And without the state getting involved and without the federal government getting involved, I don't think there's any municipality that can bear the cost of these improvements totally by themselves. So we're working with all the regional groups, we're working with the folks at the state. There's 40 different organizations working in Hampton Roads right now on this, on this issue, and our staff is running like full-speed edge, just trying to keep up, make sure that we've got somebody at every one of those meetings, at every one of those organizations. And then, of course, you know, you've authorized the study for the Lynn Haven, which is a major multi-year effort as well. So I think in the next couple, three years, you're gonna see some major solutions come forward, and then the struggle's gonna be exactly what John's raising, is how do you pay for this stuff?
Well, you know, and I think this is the purpose of me thinking out loud right now, if this is being brought up, and we talked about this at our retreat, if you recall, as well. You know, to me, is what order do we do things? I mean, I totally agree that having some information from the insurance company is great, but are we better off talking to our friends at the federal and state level first to make sure they're, because they're gonna have to be on the same playing field we're on, in my opinion, because we're gonna need, you know, let's be candid, we wouldn't have that board, beautiful, you know, boardwalk and that same replenishment, we couldn't have paid for, you know? I think we had 65 cents of every dollar.
A boardwalk is 65, 65 cents.
And I think also for those pump stations along Atlantic Avenue, they have a 65 cents of every dollar, you know? But I think this is gonna have to be a team effort. I tell you what does scare me, our studies, they go on forever. And I know we got this study, that study, and all that going on, but we also, everyone at this table knows we've got a problem. Now, let's be candid, 10 years ago, some people would probably say we didn't. So maybe we've gotten more educated and are buying off that we have a problem to deal with and deal with it. But another thing that, and I guess I'm trying to come up with a schedule, a time thing. I mean, hopefully, and I think we already are on the planning side, looking at areas within our city that maybe we shouldn't allow development on. I mean, didn't we say that at the retreat?
We did.
You know, and by golly, when we start doing things like that, we better know what we're talking about, because, you know, you're taking something away from somebody. But if it's value, the value isn't there. I mean, I guess we had oceanfront lots at Sand Bridge before we put sand down there that you couldn't build on.
Right, but now they're being built on with mega houses.
Well, I didn't want to bring up mega houses, that wasn't the point.
I know that, but --
But my thing to, they do. And I just see, gosh, we need a mastermind to kind of guide us, planning, funding, insurance, you know? All this information is huge information, and it's great information, but, you know, how are we gonna put it all together in an organized way and respond quickly?
That, I think you are correct. Timeline is, if you think that there's, if there is any federal money at all, and that's not a guarantee that there will be, but whatever it is, we'll be extremely worried. If you've done your home, or can we prove this on other projects, your roads, and we have our borrowing capacity reserves set aside, so we're not having to think about where's our matching funds coming from, what's our thought process, what's our business case, I think you can look at some of those studies that are more comprehensive, and you can say, no, I'm talking about, what about if we said, for example, and I'm just saying this as an example, talking out loud, Lynn Haven's our most intensive developed watershed, where we have maybe the greatest risk exposure from tidal --
In a lot of low areas.
So we started looking at it and saying, okay, if that's our, not saying it is, but if that were our number one project, we've got, we can move on, we don't have to wait for everything the Army Corps of Engineer does about Naval Station Norfolk and Fort Monroe. We can look at that and say, now, what do we want? Now we say, here's our piece, then we start working with Warner and the people and Ridgefield to look for the federal piece, because we're ready to do our part, we're looking for the other partner.
But when we're talking about the federal side, and again, I could be dead wrong on this, but that flood insurance is federal, and they're gonna pay out huge claims, even if we have to pay the big premium.
But here's the trick, the FEMA account, which, the trust fund, which now they're making people pay more and more money to make it what? Actuarially sound, that's a trust fund to pay claims for floods, not to do flood projects. The appropriation that would do the projects we do would be authorized and appropriated from accounts separate. Now, the argument that you make, which we would be making, is we're reducing the actuarial liability of the fund, that's a reason then for, because they're gonna make up the difference on that short, I'm with you, but the appropriation would still be out of Public Works Committees, and it would be separate from the FEMA fund, which is an actuarial trust fund to pay claims for actual damages. Small niche, niche, but I think you're on the right point, Mr. Mayor, but I think if we have fiscal capacity, because we've reserved it, we've got a project which we're working, which we can get an assessment of, independent of the larger core stuff, we can start, you know, and then we can, you know, moving along, but I do think that people that can be a partner can get a partner, because they're not gonna pay for all of it. And I think some of our neighboring communities are probably not as maybe able to do as we might be able to do, but I think we can point to our citizens, what does that mean in terms of the, when they still have to have the flood insurance, because they will, that that comes down from $8,000 on that house, it's each $3,000, maybe, that's a big difference, and your tax maybe only went up $500. But, and but if we're gonna get business to come here, I think we're gonna have to have a strategy that says, when you bring your asset here and you're making a 50-year investment, if I was a company, I'd be thinking, 50 years is a long time, what's my risk? You know, I'd be thinking about that. I just think you're right, study's too long, but if we, if we don't reserve the fiscal capacity, we can't be a partner, we can't execute any of the plans. And that's my biggest concern as I look at the CIP, that we don't overspend on other stuff and have no fiscal capacity left for borrowing capacity within our newly adopted policy to fund some of these, because even 25% of 300 million is a pretty big amount of money. It's not small. And that's my only concern, but I couldn't agree with you more in terms of your analysis about a timeline, and I think if we push aggressively, we might get some hiccups, but I certainly, I know, if we just plod along where you're, you know, when someone says, wasn't Ash Wednesday, I was here and still in 61, I think, 61?
62, 62.
It was Ash Wednesday, but there was a storm before that where the eye actually came through Hampton Roads, and that was before Ash Wednesday. Was that 60, 61?
Hazel.
I was here then, I remember three feet of water, Virginia Beach Boulevard, and people in aqueducts and whatnot, so we really are more vulnerable in terms of --
I had the Atlantic Ocean in my house as a child.
There was a picture on the Virginia Pilot where the water was just below Baltic 19th Street, only this much space, and the rest of it was water. So we really do have, we've been, thank the Lord, we've been blessed with nothing, but we have a lot more vulnerability today on a dollar value than we did back in the early 60s. And that's why I think we can't be overly aggressive on this particular topic. I know it's not popular to some people, I don't care about the science of what causes it, it just is, and when people have water in their house, they don't care about the science, they want to know why the water's in their house.
We got a couple more comments, Barbara, then Amelia.
Just several different random kinds of comments here.
Right, I think John is really right on the target when he says we really need to have some keyed in with the insurance companies, because I think the insurance companies are probably gonna drive what we do, because they are either going to make the premiums so high people can't afford it, or they're simply not gonna insure. And what was it, the latest storm that kind of missed us, Irene, maybe? That missed us, went inland, but caused so much damage inland that it has caused some companies not to be willing to even insure us in this area because of it. So I think all of this stuff from these storms has affected the insurance companies so much. I think that's something we really are gonna have to really be keyed into. But I think, too, that in our planning, as John said, there are gonna be places that we simply are, need to avoid having people build, because they are gonna run into things with being able to get insurance or so forth. And I think back, and some of the things that we have done for other purposes are gonna come in pretty handy now, like some of the properties that we purchased through the open space program, that we don't have building on, that we would have had building on, it's going to, so other programs like that may be quite beneficial in what we do with this. I think we have to look at a lot of things together. And, and of course, this comprehensive plan, I think we're mandated to consider the planning, the sea level rise as a part of this comprehensive plan update. And, you know, I think, but we sort of go back to, I think maybe we're on the right track, you know, with what we've come up with, our strategic growth areas as being the places we want to direct building to. So I think we're gonna see more of that, places where we want to direct people to build and places that we want people to stay out of. And so I do think as a part of this comprehensive plan adoption, which, you know, maybe it's slipped because of this, is one of the things, to make sure we're including these kinds of things in it. But I think what we approve and where we're going to say that building should be and where it should not be is pretty critical. I mean, we just get into, look at how much it's costing to raise these few houses, the additional height, I mean, I think that's, that's something we shouldn't even go there. It's just too expensive. It's much cheaper to avoid building in places that then you're gonna have to come back and spend that much money to raise the property, so.
Amelia?
Well, I agree with what you're saying, and Barbara, and all three of you. I was going to address what Rosemary brought up about efforts we're making in the city. We're already being proactive, because one of the reasons I went along for the Kemsville Princess Anne is they raised that up in preparation to do with this sea level rise. So I thought that's important, we're taking little baby steps, but at least we've started.
All right, well, great, great conversation, and I'm sure Mr. Spoor will figure this out in the next five months.
Only five months.
You don't hear that a lot in New York.
Yeah. I tell you what, you might not be able to sleep anymore.
Put that on my list.
All right, thank you, great conversation. Next is the Human Rights Commission Annual Report, and Cliff, we're so glad to have you here today.
Good afternoon, all.
Good afternoon.
I'm Cliff Rice, Chair of the Human Rights Commission, and I just want to give a, a couple of weeks ago, we sent out a full report, a detailed report on the activities of the Human Rights Commission. I hope all of you have got a chance to read it. Today, I'm just going to go through briefly on some of the highlights of that report to let you know what the Human Rights Commission is doing. This year, of course, we dedicated all of our activities to Myra Olbendorf passing.
Very nice of you to do that.
In summary, this report is a testimony, and I'm sure you can read it all here, but I'll just go through it quickly, but is a testimony to all the members of the Human Rights Commission and staff to achieve excellence in human relations and to build an inclusive culture, which we strive to increase community understanding of cultural diversity and tightening the fabric of understanding for all people to live, work, and visit our city. Our work continues to involve on a local and national and global level. Our Homeless Awareness Week, for the second, this is the second year we've done this, the Human Rights Commission and Volunteers of America, in partnership with the Department of Housing, Neighborhood Preservation, Beach and Community Partnerships, and the Hampton Roads Rotary Club, hosted Homeless Awareness Week on December 15 through December 21st, 2014. The community's concern and commitment to this week was demonstrated by their generous donations of blankets, jeans, socks, towels, and assorted toiletries, which we actually surpassed last year. The week concluded with Homeless Memorial Day vigil at the VOA Lighthouse Center, in which Mayor Sessions, who proclaimed Homeless Week Awareness Week, was also present there for that. Special recognition was given to Jayla Newsen, a five-year-old Virginia Beach resident who created the Jayla Helping, Helping Little Hands, which prepared and distributed bags filled with items for people who are experiencing homelessness. And also, on a special note, I just would like to let you know that we've done, in this city, done one heck of a job in trying to cut down on the homelessness, and we've seen the impact of what the council has done to try to get that through. We've seen what our volunteers have done to work with that, and I think I just had to highlight it myself, because I've seen it, and I've known some people who unfortunately were in that mix and were able to come out of it based on some of the programs that was initiated right through here. In celebration of the 66th Annual International Human Rights Day, we hosted a cultural community conversation on December 10th at the Redundance Academy. The purpose of this event was to bring citizens together to discuss what they have in common, listen to community concerns, and learn the mutual misunderstandings of many cultures in our community. The conversations were formatted for the top three, with top three requested by the citizens. Education, the LGBT, and Living in the Shadows. Citizens were instructed to discuss what they see or experience in these communities. Through open dialogue, participants spoke, listened in a very positive and respectful manner. These civil-minded citizens are willing to share their talents and experience to form task forces to address these issues and concerns. These conversations will continue throughout the year. A second conversation took place on May 13th, 2015, for further group discussions and determine how to implement the recommendations. At that time, focus groups had been established and are actively addressing concerns and developing action plans. The Just Faith Program, for the second year, Commissioner Islam and Teresa Stanley continued to coordinate and host sessions based on a nationwide program called Just Faith, which brings people of Christian, Jewish, and Muslim faiths together. Students of Just Faith Program relayed their experiences in the program and expressed their gratitude for the impact the program has had upon them and in the community through it too. They explained this to the Human Rights Commission. Moving along, the Human Rights Commission's 21st Annual Awards Program. On April 29th, 2015, more than 140 people gathered at the Virginia Beach Convention Center for the Virginia Beach Human Rights Commission's 21st Human Rights Awards Program. This year, we titled it Changing Lives in Virginia Beach 365 Days a Year. Through their efforts in our community, these citizens are continuously changing and improving our city for the better and for humankind. Six awards were presented. For the second year, the Human Rights Commission, along with citizens, observed the oceanfront during beach weekend, by that, what we call beach weekend observers. They served as welcoming ambassadors. They served as welcoming ambassadors, providing general information, observing citizen services, and the city services assessing the atmosphere with regards to safety, friendliness, as well as any signs of discrimination. A report that reflected, was compiled for the information, and we passed that on to the police chief. I was there myself, and I just want to let you know that this year was very, it was interesting. I got a chance to just talk to the folks that were out there. We didn't have any major problems. We did have some concerns that were addressed very, very well, and I think the police department did an excellent job in trying to do what they did. And having those ambassadors out there certainly was an aid as well. The fair and impartial policing, the Virginia Beach Police Department had a program entitled Fair and Impartial Policing. It's a scientific program that was put together by some folks from the police forum. And this training I attended also, I was invited to attend, and it really showed the difference on how the policing works in most cities and how we all have our biases, but how we can transfer that bias to the better part of policing. I had a role. I also went up to Washington DC, and I was out in Baltimore, and I had an opportunity to work with these folks, the different police departments. Those of you who know, I've been in law enforcement, I was in law enforcement for almost 40 years, and I have a pretty good idea of what seems to be some of the problems that we're having around the city. I can also tell you this, and I want you to feel very good about it, is that I have worked with Chief Severa for a long time, and I've known him for years. Him and I attended the Police Leadership School together many, many years ago. And through his work and his efforts, we've really tried to make this department, his department, a highlight and motivational type model for a lot of police departments around the country. And I think you can say that your city has one of the finest police departments and also has a police department that is really willing to work with its citizens. And that's where we're having problems around the country. And I was one of those individuals that was asked to give some input on that. And I've traveled, and I've made some comments, and hopefully we'll see that in, around the country, the model that this city police department is trying to make.
Cliff, can I interrupt you for just?
And I think you should be proud of that.
One second, because I couldn't agree with you more than what you've just said. But just as an example, at Lake Edward, what, a month or two ago, they had Community Day. 3,000 people in attendance, the police force playing basketball with a group of young people, the police force mingling with the 3,000 people there, and the community giving an award to the police department for what they've done to make their community feel safer and working with them. They pleaded for someone from the news to cover that. Not one person came. Two churches worked diligently. And my point in saying that is, first of all, we're very proud of our police department and what they've done to receive that. But secondly, isn't that what people need to see? Something like that, working and being positive, not just here in Virginia Beach, but across the country. And we're not, these things, and it occurred, plain and simple, in Virginia Beach, but that is something that the people need to see. I don't care who you are, what you are. And how do we get that done?
Well, you know, the police departments, years ago, when I started back in the early 60s, police departments had these called the PAL. And that PAL was Police Athletic League. They took youth and worked with youth all summer long, took them on trips and did everything with NYPD was very, that's the department I came from. We worked very hard with the community. I think what's happening around the country, and I think what's good about here is that your department is asking for input. And that's what's, to me, is what's hurting, is that some of the police departments, unfortunately, think they know what the community wants without asking. And you can't do that. You've got to be, you've got to start to listen. We know, we can go back, let's go back 30 years ago. We know this city. We know this city. We've tried, we know that everything didn't work all the time. And it took some hard decisions to make things start to work. People start to say, oh, I didn't, I see what you're saying. I see what you're doing. Okay? And that's what happens. So I think with people like Chief Severa, who's willing to listen, and believe me, I talked to him quite a bit, and his staff, his senior staff, I do training with his staff, I work with recruitment with his staff. But it's a matter of trying to get people to understand and getting the newspapers to understand that these are the things that are really trying to work. They only jump on things that are negative. Let's be honest. They jump on the negative. It makes news. It makes news. Being nice, being a nice cop does not make news. That's unfortunate. But people in this room, and I give Jim Parks a volunteer that works very hard to try to make sure people understand what's going on. He knows what's going on, and he's willing to share that. And that's good stuff. When you have people like Bonnie, who works very hard with us, she not only does her work here, but she gets in the community with us. I get out in the community. You don't realize how many people in this community, right here in Virginia Beach, that are working as volunteers, doing so much work, so much work. And you can't count the hours, but you can count the achievements. And it's so good to have people like our councilmen to come out at our meetings, and they're there. And I'm proud to see them there. They're there. So when questions come up, they're right there to answer them. You can't ask for more than that. And that doesn't happen all the time. And it's not that they have to be there. They want to be there. And that's good. And they listen, and that's good. When I speak to them, they can bring that message along, and that's good stuff. I'll keep moving on. I don't want to hold you up all night. I can go on forever, though. Let me stop. Meeting with the Mexican ambassadors. And this was another great thing, too. And one of our commissioners, Beatrice Alabam, and I know you all know her, Ken Starley and Bonnie was there for this one also. What a great meeting to have, meeting with them and getting our Mexican community involved in letting them know that we understand that they've got some issues and we're trying to address them too. Chief Severa met the next day, which is May 21st, and he met with the Honorable Juan Carlos Mendoza Sanchez, discussing the policing concerns in the Mexican community. And the informed presentation, these are the presentations that we've made this year, and you can see that. I'll go down the list. The Virginia Beach Police Department Community Outreach, the Virginia Beach Police Department's Human Trafficking, that was another issue that came up, that we were trying to address that as well. Then the enrollment and residency, that's the public schools, Virginia Beach City Public Schools, residency required. There were some issues in dealing with the, especially with the Hispanic community that came up, with them not being able to register because people didn't realize what they had to do to do it. And then some of the people that were in the system didn't realize what they needed to tell them. So it was a mixed up, and some of the kids were left out. So we've got information to them. They know exactly what to do on both sides, and thank goodness, we've got through that. The Virginia, we talked about the Sheriff's GED Program. Also, the Virginia Beach Human Resource Strategic Workforce and Employment Plan, we went through that. And that Let's Open Doors Program, that's a program, if you haven't heard, I'm sure you must have, and that's working with the handicap, trying to get businesses to do more so they'll have access to some of these stores and restaurants and everything else, and we're working with them. In fact, we're trying to put together a proclamation so that, to let folks know that that's something that's critical as well. So we're working with that as well. On our community events, the Human Trafficking Forum with Congressman Ridgell's office, the FBI, Virginia Beach Crime Prevention and Stere Committee. We also work together with the Foundation for Awareness Breakfast Meetings, the National Light Out, Night Out, I'm sorry, welcome reception for Dr. Aaron Spence from the Virginia Beach Public School Superintendent. Our community events, that was the Virginia Beach, the Virginia Center for Inclusive Communities Humanitarian Dinner, we were there. The Urban League's Hampton Roads Event, we showed there. The Hampton Roads Diversity and Inclusion Consortium Quarterly Meetings, present. Point in Time Count, there. Virginia Beach Neighborhood Surveys. In fact, I was with the chief when we went out making those surveys, and I thought that was another point I wanted to bring up as well. To have a police officer, and especially the chief of police, knock on your door and ask to come in and to see if you've got a problem, doesn't happen in every city, especially a city of this size. So you really have to, some people would say, oh, you got to let them in, right? Scared to death if somebody knocks on your door. The truth of the matter, it didn't work that way at all. It worked out very well. They were very receptive. The Afro-American community, some of the Afro-American community was so surprised, but they felt that after the discussion, and that's what we keep talking about, trying to make sure people understand why you're doing something, so that people understand why it's done. And that's what happened with that Virginia Beach PD survey. We also addressed that Western Bayside Community Event. And here's where we're offering assistance. One of the objectives of the commission is to provide assistance to residents who believe their rights have been violated. Of course, the commission does not have legal authority to act on claims. Rather, the role of the commission is to assist the person with identifying the appropriate agency at the local, state, or national level that can really address that claim. This year, we received 16 inquiries from our citizens needing referral assistance for education, housing, employment, and disability. And I won't, you can go down your list with your city committees that we're involved And in closing, I just want to say that it's really been a pleasure for me as the chair to work with the group that we have. It's a group of people who really feel a need, serve a need for the city. But more importantly, it seems to me that by having this type of outlet, so that we can get right to, I can speak to the city manager, to the mayor, to my councilman on any issue. When you can move and talk to your chief, and you can talk to the sheriff, with one phone call like that and get issues addressed, that is certainly a pleasure. So it's really a pleasure for me. I thank you for the time, and thank you. And I hope if you have the chance with your report, if there's some questions that you'd like to bring up, please do. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Yes, thank you. Bobby?
Yeah, thank you. And I know I speak on behalf of Shannon, and what a pleasure it is to, you know, to be the liaison with you. And I really believe that, you know, this council and the staff and the people of Virginia Beach are proud of your efforts. Thank you to all the members of the community, you know, the commission, and also to Regina and Bonnie, who really send a message that the city wants to be engaged with them in a very positive way and do, you know, a great job. What's amazing, though, is you have a group of really diverse, eclectic people that come into a room and deal with some of the most lightning rod issues out on the map today. And the grace and dignity and the mutual respect that you give to each other is how you're able, you know, to solve problems. And I really think it's, this is like a template of other cities should be looking at what they're doing here in Virginia Beach and trying to build these positive bridges with the community and, you know, not be afraid to deal with those real lightning rod issues that have to be dealt with. And they're out there. And, you know, it's just an amazing thing to watch. Cliff, you weren't at the last meeting, but one of the things I broached about, you know, the council, I may be talking about at the upcoming retreat on building respect, you know, in the community and the public square. I can't think of a better vehicle than the Human Rights Commission to help build the bridges that we have to do to establish, you know, better communication and rapport. You know, you're talking about the Just Faith Initiative that Raj Islam and Teresa Stanley have. You've got a bunch of, you know, different faiths together, and what they focus on is more on what they have in common than what they have dividing them and building those bridges. And it's worked. And I think that's a model that, you know, we could use moving forward, you know, to help us out in our initiative to just build some, you know, better bridges in the public square. Thank you.
Shannon, and then Amelia?
And I didn't see it in the report, excuse me if I overlooked it, but again, the state conference was hosted here in the city again this year from the Human Rights Commissions from across the state, and the local contingency was represented well, and it shows just another outreach. And as Bobby said, being an example, I think a lot of the other localities and municipalities were really looking at this group and as a model for how to operate. They did a really great job.
Amelia?
Big congratulations on this report. We can see your passion for what you do. So you almost, you know, you have, you could just see it come through. And also, I would like to mention how innovative and creative, having the Open Door Program. And we were wondering what that open door, but to help those who are disabled. That is important because we want every citizen to feel they are part of this city.
Be cool.
And then the other program, as you mentioned, just being very important.
Thank you, ma'am.
So thank you all. Thank the groups, thank the council members who are very active with what you do.
You'd thank the mayor.
Absolutely. I'd like to go ahead and just thank Cliff and the entire group, to the staff support, to the liaisons on council, great report, and look forward to another great year. Thank you for your service. Okey dokey. Mr. Jones has just taken five hours to get through the Hampton Roads. We welcome you.
Close to that.
It wasn't really. Glad you're here. The next thing will be the city manager's briefing, and we're going to have Stephen White and Karen, I believe. We're delighted to have you all here.
The newspaper has Mr. Spoor resigning, not retiring. Already, talking about the negative news.
No, you're fine.
Is that a fact? Can you re, uh?
Yeah.
We've just been told that you resigned instead of retired in the newspaper. Was I right on or what?
You can't make it up.
Oh, no, they changed it.
Oh, it's now to retire. We got that fixed.
It's odd, too. I mean, I'm not, it had resigned.
I didn't mean, sorry.
We're not ready yet.
I can't, you said, who, me?
I'm going to tell you about the August 4th meeting, and then Stephen will tell you about the August 18th meeting. So on your August 4th meeting, you will have eight planning items, and you can see half of those are going to be in the Princess Anne District. First one is a conditional use permit for auto repair garage. This applicant has acquired property, about a dozen properties in this vicinity. He has an auto sales site just off the map to the north on Virginia Beach Boulevard. He would like to do auto repair here for those cars and for some of those customers. He was also approved further south on Pennsylvania Avenue just several months ago for auto repair, but he has decided he would rather use this site. So this would be his auto repair facility. Here's the air photo. He is going to use the existing 6,000-square-foot building and renovate that. The site is in the Pembroke Strategic Growth Area. We see this use is transitional in nature. Again, he's using the existing building, and he has agreed to a 10-year time limit. This is what the existing site looks like, and with his renovation, this is what it will look like. So we think that's a significant improvement to that site. Staff recommended approval. Planning Commission recommended approval by a vote of 11 to 0. This was not on their consent agenda because there was one person who appeared in opposition. His opposition mainly focused on parking problems in the area. Number two, in the Kempsville District, this is another conditional use permit for an automobile repair garage here on Davis Street. There are two large warehouse buildings existing on the site, as you can see in that air photo. The applicant would like to use about 2,000 square feet of that northernmost building for this auto repair garage. for this auto repair garage. He would do bodywork and a paint booth. There will be no exterior storage, no exterior repair work done. It'll be open from 7:30 in the morning to about 5:30 in the evening, and he will have 10 employees on the site. It is a fairly neat-looking site at this point, but he will improve it by adding landscaping along Davis Street, which we're glad to see because although Davis Street, there is a lot of heavy repair uses on there, it is the entrance to residential neighborhood further to the south. He will also put in a large evergreen hedge along the side there that you can see in green, and we're happy about that because these are apartment units right next to it. So that will be a great buffer. There's some unsightly barbed wire on the site that will all come down, so we feel this is a good improvement. Staff recommended approval. It was on the Planning Commission's consent agenda, and there was no opposition to that request. Wave Church at their Great Neck Road site is asking to modify the conditions on their use permit to add two modular units where that blue dot is on the site behind the building. There's the air photo. Each unit is 24 feet by 60 feet. They'll locate them on a gravel portion of the site behind the building, and they have agreed to a five-year time limit. There's where the modulators would go with the five-year time limit. This is what the modular units would look like. And staff recommended approval. It was on Planning Commission's consent agenda, and there was no opposition to the request.
So in your printout, it's got Wave Church on Seaboard Road. I assume that's just an error.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, the Seaboard Road one is next. Here's the Seaboard Road site for Wave Church. Basically, I'm sorry, that's an error. We'll correct that before we get to your formal agenda in August. On this site, they would only like, they would like to have one modular unit where that blue dot is. And it is some 950 feet off of Seaboard Road. It will not be very visible. There's also a landscaped berm along this portion of the site and along this portion of the site, so it's not going to be very visible back there. Same size, 24 by 60, just one of them, and they have agreed to the five-year time limit I'm sorry. Planning Commission recommended approval. Staff recommended approval. It was on the consent agenda, and no opposition.
I have a question.
Sir?
Could I have the rendering of the parking, the further, like, the children? I noticed here, once again, we have, we talked about trying to aggregate space. This is one of the things we talked about, whether, you know, about the landscaping and the amount of green area to get it more.
Yes.
And here we seem to be, we're right back to the standard kind of, when are we planning on ever applying that policy we talked about?
We encourage it. Anytime, anyone can do it. It's something we can approve administratively. But in this case, that's already existing, so, you know, we're not trying them to change that.
So they're just putting a building where they already have a parking lot?
Well, the building actually, this is all the parking lot. The building's back over here, not in the parking lot, facing there.
The government's understood.
You can see right there, so it's not on the parking lot.
On the green space?
Thank you.
On the green.
I didn't pay enough attention. Thank you.
All right. This one, in the Princess Anne District, is all the way down the southern tip of Sand Bridge. The campground, outdoor resorts community down there, definitely on Back Bay, a lot of waterfrontage. This was, this site was approved back in 1966 for a campground. A campground in the zoning ordinance is defined as, you know, condensed version premises where spaces are offered for relatively short periods of time for portable recreation housing. And portable is the key word. This campground has gradually transitioned over the years to condominium ownership with more permanent structures in place, which was never a focus for us until FEMA paid us a community assistant visit and found deficiencies at outdoor resorts that need to be corrected, floodplain violations. So the owners of these condominium units have two options. One, they can be, option one, they can have an RV in place for no longer than 180 days. That RV has to be highway-ready. Tires have to be inflated. Decks cannot be connected to it. It has to be quick release, have quick release utilities in place. Or option number two, they have to meet the requirements for manufactured homes. That unit has to be anchored, has to be, have a permanent foundation elevated to the base flood level and so forth. Problem is that because it is approved right now as a campground where you're only supposed to have portable housing, we cannot give them building permits to correct these floodplain violations. So several months ago, you helped us by amending the city zoning ordinance to create a new category called recreational resort community. And that is a community with an emphasis on outdoor recreational activities, seasonal living accommodations, not designed to be long-term housing or principal residence. And you can apply to have a variety of housing types. So this request is a conditional use permit by outdoor resorts to become a recreational resort community instead of a campground, so that they can come into compliance with the floodplain regulations. The only change proposed for the site is that there would be a variety of housing types allowed. You can still have recreational vehicles, and there's still some folks in there who want to retain a recreational vehicle ready to roll out. You can have the park model trailers, and they'd also like the option of having manufactured homes or stick-built cottages with the same footprint as the park model trailers. So here's some pictures of what a park model trailer looks like now. You can see that deck and the awning are permanently connected to the park model trailer. And there's some other examples of this type of unit that's on this site. These are some pictures of what the modulators or stick-bills would look like. Again, it's the same footprint, basically 40 feet by 14 feet wide. It does have a second story, a small second story that could be like a sleeping loft for children or a storage area. We feel these units are better quality than the park model trailers, more attractive, more aesthetically pleasing, and again, it's on the same footprint. So staff did recommend approval of this change. It was on Planning Commission's consent agenda, and there was no opposition to the request.
Barbara has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Allowing those types of building, though, seems to really get away from, you know, the campground concept, which, you know, it was.
Yes, no.
But this seems to be going pretty far to being a
Right, the difference
Permanent housing kind of thing. I just am a little bit concerned that, you know, what starts as one thing seems to morph into something else before you turn around twice.
Yeah.
I've really got to think about that.
Okay.
Permanent housing.
Well, it can't be
Rentals and rentals and, you know.
Pretty much what they're doing now. And to meet the FEMA requirements, it is a pretty major investment on the owner's part, and
Because I think when we adopted this change for a resort, recreational resort community, we sort of explained, said to the community that it's, you know, was something to conform to FEMA, but it really wasn't going to change this campground concept.
Right.
But once you put in that, to me, that becomes a permanent housing thing. I'm a little concerned.
Concerned about it. It can't be, it can't be their primary place of residence kind of thing, so, yeah.
John?
Picking up on Barbara's concern, and I wouldn't have thought about this if I didn't see a demographic magazine talk about microhousing on wheels which are in this size.
Yes, sir.
So my point being is, we could accommodate the concern about appearance, but not accommodate the thing of permanence if we looked at that, because those things are wheeled, they can be moved, they can be, they're movable, they are
Oh, yes, yeah, I'm just thinking of the implications.
But the dimensions are certainly within that, those things you just mentioned.
Right. I'm thinking of the FEMA implications because these do have to be permanently anchored and on a permanent foundation.
But my point is, if they were only there back this 180 days, and I guess that's 180 consecutive days, 180 days in total in any calendar year period.
In a year, period.
Okay. I'm just thinking there's, I can see her point, because these things talk about FEMA, but they're not up on stilts, but they're the same house as everybody else has their home on an elevated thing. And here, we're going to something that's ground level and saying you can make it permanent just by this.
Well, they, I mean, they'll have to be elevated to floodplain level.
So they're, but not elevated like the other homes that are 15 feet.
No.
That's, I think that's what Barbara was kind of getting at when you say permanent.
Yeah, no.
It's a permanent structure that's like the old brick homes on the oceanfront that my uncle used to own.
How many square feet?
I understand. About 400. I'm sorry, 40 by 14. I've got all that.
Dana?
Sorry.
There's no one permanently living there now, right?
Right, no, it's in their bylaws. They cannot live there permanently, and that will not change. That would not change with this proposal.
This could be done as an interval-type thing if, or shared residence, if you will, then they wouldn't be there over 180 days.
It is a change.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay.
All right, and next one. This is two rezonings. The BT Holdings, this portion of the property, and it's going from, the requesting rezoning from agricultural to I-1 industrial and a lease permit for a bulk storage yard. And the Brown family portion is this 30-foot strip here. They're asking for rezoning from R-20 to I-1 industrial. And the 30-foot strip would be the access to the bulk storage yard, which would be through the, through this industrial complex here rather than have another curb cut on Damn Neck or Harper's. So that's positive. This would be for a bulk storage yard that would house, store licensed and operable motor vehicles, including cars, rec vehicles, recreational vehicles, buses, boats, you know, no inoperable, no junk vehicles. And the site is in the highest noise zone. It has a Navy easement over it that does not allow residential use. It only allows warehouse and industrial-type uses. Same facts for the Brown site. But that would be the roadway. This is their site plan. You can see that here adjacent is a large, very nice residential area that was zoned before, before ACU's. And there were, there was opposition to this request from some of those residents. Originally, when this came in, the bulk storage yard went all the way over into this site. And working with the residents, they have pulled that back away from the residential neighborhood, and they're going to reinforce this area adjacent to the residential neighborhood. So some of the neighborhood was, was not opposed, but there was still some opposition. Staff recommended approval. Planning Commission approved it 11 to 0, recommend approval. And then there was opposition from the neighborhood.
Barbara?
I know that part of the opposition from the beginning was the bad experience that they have had with an existing bulk storage yard there, you know, with people kind of living there and having parties and lots of things going on. What about this protects them from having that happen in this part?
Okay, well, this, there will be no buildings on the site. It is just a bulk storage yard, period. And like I said, it has pulled way back away from the residential neighborhood. So it's a different type of, different, oops, sorry, different type of use. Mini warehouses and bulk stor, you know, mini warehouses are not the quiet neighbor they used to be, you know. Back in the old days, we thought that was always a good use to put next to residential. Not anymore. And the way this one is zoned, you know, there's businesses being run out of a lot of those units and girls' baseball practice, all kinds of things. And we're out there constantly. They're pretty much, you know, in line with their conditions at this point, but it's, you know, it's not the quiet neighbor that, you know, it used to be in those dwellings there, you know, not what they envisioned as a neighbor.
Typical Princess Anne application.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, this will
I can imagine them at Great Forty out around the bulk storage.
That'll be the
If someone wants to have a party for
Electricity?
Shannon, I'm sorry.
I've been called many, many times on this one. The residents that's directly in the back that is affected the most by this development, is there any more contingency in there to be able to give them more coverage from their backyard? Because I know it's, I think he said 60 feet or whatever from the backyard, but that's from his house, not from the back of his yard, so he's losing a lot of the privacy in the back of his yard.
Talking about the, for this new application, not for the existing.
Yeah, they've pulled that way, way back, and they've got, they've got, all this is going to be reinforced and buffered. So if you're talking about the gentleman on the corner here, who's the president of the civic league, I called you, yeah, he was, he was good with this, with that change.
Okay. He was there in support.
Well, good, good.
But there were others who were not. Can't. Okay, last one for August 4th is an amendment to the zoning ordinance. What we'd like to do is add group home as a conditional use permit option in the B-4 mixed-use district. Right now, a group home is a conditional use permit in residential apartment and agricultural districts. We feel since the B-4 allows both commercial and residential land uses, that this would be a good option in that district. And the first applicant may be the city's Housing Resource Center on that one. So staff recommended approval. It was on Planning Commission's consent agenda, and there was no opposition to the amendment.
Very good. All right. We're glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This meeting appears to be devoted to the beach. It's just the way it turned out. Didn't plan it that way. First application, 2798 Dean LLC, and you can see there it's at the end of Dean Drive. It's a conditional use permit for a bulk storage yard. And this one has a little bit of history to it. The applicant purchased it in 2014 and began renovations to the storage yard and to the building. And it was determined that the renovation, one, was done without proper permits, including the fact that he had no use permit for a bulk storage yard. It expanded into the area of the yard, into the RPA and the wetlands. It actually does also encroach into city property. So there were some issues with the environmental side of it. And on February 23rd, 2015, the applicant gained approval from the CBPA board with 20 conditions that needed to be met. This is a photograph of the site aerial from 2013, and this is an aerial that was recently taken in 2015. You can see the encroachment, the wall is headed toward the, headed toward the creek from there to there. And this drawing is complicated, but it shows you everything that's occurred. That red line there is the property line of the site. So you can see down there in the lower left corner that there is some encroachment into city property, and that's being resolved through an encroachment process. The applicant, after the CBPA board met out on the site with the COR, with DEQ, and with city staff, there was much discussion, and they came to a mitigation plan that seems to be acceptable to everyone. So when the site plan is submitted, it will have to include all the adherence to all the conditions of the CBPA plan, as well as everything that was agreed to on the site with the COR and DEQ. Planning staff recommended approval with conditions, and the Planning Commission voted on their consent agenda to recommend approval, and there was no opposition. The commission felt that with the security of knowing the CBPA conditions were going to take effect, plus what had been worked out with DEQ and the COR, that they were satisfied that issues had been resolved.
All the DEQ and COR engineers and all that stuff, so that information be in our pack up before we, when we vote, when we get all that detail.
I can make sure it gets in there.
I'd like to see all, I'd like to see all that.
Is the encroachment agreement going to be part of that as well?
I've got to find out when that's coming to you. I would like for it to come at the same time. This one, Loray Tucker is, yes, this is in the Beach District. Everybody always asks me that, but it is in the Beach District.
I was just saying, isn't that mine?
Everyone thinks it's in your district, yes.
Where's the line?
The line actually goes down South Rosemont Road. I was surprised when I found out myself. This one I was surprised when I found out myself. This one is a 711, use permit for fuel sales with a convenience store. And many of the longer-term members on the city council may remember this as the Roving Auto Site. The owner and operator of Roving Auto left the site, took his monument LED sign with him. And the site has been for sale, and so he's doing this 711. The applicant is 711. 32, well, 3260 square foot convenience store, fuel pumps, building's located in the north. That's, remember that? That'll be gone soon if this is approved. Building is actually going to be located in the corner of the property. The top road up there is the road into the neighborhood, South Plaza and Rosemont. The store is very similar to one that the council approved as a use permit a few, well, probably a year ago. And it's at the corner of Independence and Haygood. Same concept with the diagonal wedge-shaped store.
Pembroke Boulevard.
Pembroke, yes.
Pembroke Boulevard, not Haygood.
That's it, thank you.
This looks very nice.
You can see, this site currently has five curb cuts, and there will only be two. One on South Plaza, and then they are adding that right-hand turn lane into the facility on Rosemont Road. So definitely an improvement in that direction. And here are the elevations of the store. If you want to go out to Pembroke Boulevard, you can see the same store. Very nice. Planning staff recommended approval. Planning Commission put it on its consent agenda, and there was no opposition.
Hey, Stephen, I'm assuming that if this gets approved, that, that eliminates the existing, the auto repair component?
Just, right. Exactly. Supersedes it, overrides it. That's a good way to put it. Yeah. The next one is applicant's PF Hilltop. This is in the Regency Shopping Center, and it's a use permit for indoor recreation. There's the site's in the back corner of the shopping center, and it's for 21,000 square feet of what the shopping center calls Unit 20. And with the exception of new signs, you won't notice any changes at all to the site or the building. And it's Planet Fitness, if anybody's curious. That's where the PF comes from. That's the store. Store closing, store is closed, and now it will be Planet Fitness. Planning staff recommended approval. Planning Commission put it on their consent agenda, and there was no opposition. Fun Spot Amusement. This is a conditional use permit for outdoor recreation. And this application has been one of our fun spots. More fun, I don't know how to put it. It's, it's got some history to it. What the, what the outdoor recreation will consist of in the site is that parking lot right there. It's inflatables. It's an inflatable zip line and an inflatable cliff. And last year, the city council approved a conditional use permit to allow use of that site as a commercial parking lot for two years with full site improvements. It had been, before that, used as a temporary commercial lot. And it couldn't be used that way any longer, so they went, got approval from you for the full lot. Site hasn't been improved since then. They've actually been doing some intermittent parking out there. So our zoning, crack zoning inspection staff has been on that. But they want to do these inflatables on the eastern half of the site. This is the plan that you approved for the commercial parking lot last year for the full improvements. This is what they've proposed, and the inflatables are on the left there. One's the zip line, the other's the cliff. Photograph of the site. This is the zip line inflatable. The cliff, I don't think I have in here, but the cliff is just a larger one. It's higher, and there are blowers that blow at 90 decibels. And as a result of the type of use, and that this is a Gateway III, street furniture, the Form-based code, and the history with this site, staff ended up recommending denial of the application. Planning Commission, however, voted 10-0 with one abstention to recommend approval with conditions. And the conditions require that the installation of all the improvements from the commercial parking lot be done before they can actually operate the inflatables. So I, if this gets approved, I don't know that they would be able to do the inflatables this season. There was no opposition to the request.
What are the risk factors, something like that? The risk factor of inflatables?
They have, I know they have to be certified because they're considered amusement. And the building code kicks in, and they have to be safety certified, so there's an inspection process in place for that. I don't know, I don't know if I'd feel safe, inflatable zip line, I don't.
Is there a pack-up time in case the storm's coming through out of nowhere, or that they can?
I really don't, don't know.
Just a real quick question. Obviously, we did do a similar scenario we did to CUP for a parking lot. If we do this, does this overwrite the conditional use permit for the bulk lot?
The way it's worded, the conditions are worded, they, they're together.
So they would be able to use this space for the amusement use plus the commercial lot?
If that's what they wanted to do.
John.
I mean, I don't, I just don't, I'm not, people who don't do what they say they're going to do, and then we reward them for not doing it just runs counter to my gut instinct, but I'll wait to hear what they have to say and try to remain open-minded.
All right, great. Next?
Next, we have two applications still in the Beach District of Mark and Kenny Santini, or Sam Tanny. These are special exception alternative compliance Form-based code. There's two applications here because there's two sites. And this site is at 1602 Atlantic Avenue, corner of 16th and Atlantic. The other site is at 2904 Atlantic Avenue. And the issue is the fact that the buildings are, don't meet mixed-use type. This is a shopping two-street furniture on Atlantic Avenue. It allows mixed-use building type. And that is required to have two stories. What is being proposed are buildings that don't meet the minimum height of 25 feet for a two, for a story, two-story building or one-story building. Two-story building. Two-story building, okay. Inside, when I show you these, that's the existing building. But when you see this, you're going to think it looks like it's a two-story building, and it looks like a two-story building. But the interior of that, that floor that's occupied by the actual retail space doesn't meet that minimum height. And you can see here, this is trying to show you the drop-down of the actual roof that's behind the canopy. 25. So in order for them to meet, or in order for, to be located on Atlantic Avenue, since they don't meet the mixed-use building type, they need alternative compliance, and that's what they're here for. And this is being heard August 12th. For the planning commission, it's being expedited at the concurrence in goodwill of the council district person.
What's the reason for being expedited? Is it a loan?
You would have to ask our Karen. I can, yeah, go ahead.
There was a mix-up in, in staff interpretation, and I feel it's-
Okay, that's good.
-our fault. We need to make up a little time to this applicant. Thank you.
Time is money, so I'm just, just curious. Thank you very much.
I'd like to see a nice improvement.
Yeah, they're very nice buildings.
I'm telling you, the market doesn't support us.
The next one is a street closure request, Victoria Park Homeowners Association. And this one is a request to close Guernsey Way, which you can see right there. It's between Bombay Landing and Victoria Park and Kellum High School. It was, when Victoria Park was approved by the city council in 2003, typical of what was expected in the transition area, which the transitionary policies still call for is connectivity, vehicular and pedestrian. So this plan showed Guernsey as a vehicular connection to the property next to it. And there are actually three other connections that are pedestrian in nature. And then there is another vehicular connection for the future at that cul-de-sac at the top, top right. So there was plans for connection all along, and some of you may, may remember that there was actually approval for another subdivision at the top there to the east. It was Manchester Station. That didn't, didn't come through. It fell through. So the school board ended up with the site planned and built at Kellum High School. So the process of the charrettes and the design and everything that went through with this, saw this as being a connection from the neighborhood to the Kellum High School site because the site is just not the high school. It has some wonderful recreational amenities. There are trails. There are the tennis courts. Plus, this connection gets you to the trail system on West Neck Road, which then connects to the trail system on Nemo Parkway and Princess Anne Road. So you can go from Victoria Park to Red Mill and Landstown to Amphitheater if you wanted to, without going out on North Landing Road and trying to walk or ride a bike out there. The homeowners association would like to see this closed, closed off. Their primary reason for that has to do with what they perceive as vandalism and parking issue. And we're going to do a verbatim for you on this one because I think it's important that you see the, or read the responses of the applicant when the commission started to push about what was the vandalism and what was the parking issue. As you can see, when this fence was put in place and it's been broken through, so obviously someone's trying to get through the fence onto the trail. And Tony Arnold's told us it's been repaired a couple of times or more, and it keeps getting knocked out, so.
Who's fence is it?
The school board.
The school board put up?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
And so they paved the sidewalk to, to a fence?
That had to do with a plan that was worked out with the community. Because I don't think I have the pictures in here. I don't.
I saw that there's a space of dirt on either side, but the fence was put up after the sidewalk?
That fence was put up after, yes.
Can we have a history a little bit of that from the school board, too? I'd like to understand.
Tony will be, yes, sir. Mr. Arnold will be glad to tell you that history.
This says that the planning commission voted to recommend denial. Is that correct? Because I thought, I saw in the summary.
Summary is wrong. Right.
So which is it?
The summary was wrong. We found that out today. Somebody pointed it out to us. They misunderstood that the planning commission voting affirmatively for the motion to deny, they took that to mean it was being approved, so.
So they voted affirmatively to support the staff's recommendation?
To support the staff's recommendations to deny.
This, this goes, this is a bit of a controversy.
Say this in service.
The, the Kellum High School sort of compromised with the neighborhood when they opened because the neighborhood feared that there would be a lot of parking problems in Victoria Park with student parking going to Kellum. And so the school board kind of put the fence up at the request of the neighborhood, at the request of the neighborhood. However, I think there was a lot of strong feeling that there really needed to be pedestrian access between, you know, the, the neighborhood and the school so that students could walk rather than having to do buses. And with the fence up, Kellum now has been open for a little over a year. There has been vandalism of the fence, apparently with, you know, folks kind of saying, we want to be able to walk. But there are strong feeling among some of the people at the, at Victoria Park. I think perhaps they're split. I don't know for sure that they want the fence there, and I think they have to have this closure because then the homeowners association would be able to control this.
Right.
And prohibit, you know, pedestrian usage of it. So that's kind of the overall background for you to see as it progresses. So I think we'll probably want to hear from the schools.
Yes.
And, as well as the neighborhood, so that you have the full perspective.
And you're also going to-
We look forward to you bringing a nice resolution.
And you're going to see, and the staff, the staff report's going to include information about utilities that are located in that right-of-way, which calls an additional problem. It's part of the reason that the, the viewers thought it was a public inconvenience to close this. Studio Evolved, this one's an easy one. This use permit, Tattoo Studio. The easy one, Rose Hall. Tattoo Studio that was approved in 2010 in a 1,500-square-foot unit. And been very successful, and now has the opportunity to expand into an additional 2,000 square feet. So needs a modification to the use permit. We've had no calls or complaints about this operation. It will allow him to, that's the building. He'll occupy the entire first floor. As you see there, the red are the new walls, the new building, in the building. So we recommended approval. Planning Commission put it on their consent agenda, and there was no opposition. And the last item is an amendment to the zoning ordinance that has been, we really don't have a lot of choice on because it's another one of those items that the General Assembly amended the Virginia Code. And in this case, what they did was the threshold at which you're determined to be a family daycare, a childcare facility. In this case, family daycare home. They have specific names for each type. Currently, it's five, and the state code's been amended to make it four. So we're changing our zoning ordinance to be consistent with the state code.
Just a question. When we make this change, since we know all the people who've gotten these conditional use permits, do we send some kind of letter actively or some kind of notification so they know that there's, everybody doesn't read the paper or watch our council meetings, believe it or not. But yeah, there's some way that we notify the people so that they know that they can be in compliance?
Well, the, those that have a conditional use permit are fine. It's the ones-
That-
Are they like grandfathered?
Yeah. I will call Social Services and find out how they plan to address it, and if they don't, we'll talk-
I think people consciously, if they know, they'll try to do the right thing, but they might not know.
The state really helps us a great deal because when they, when the, the home goes to get a license, they tell them that they have to come see us to get a use permit first.
Okay, thank you very much.
And that's your agenda for August, Mr. Mayor.
Stephen, we certainly do. Thank you. We'll now go to city council comments. I'm going to start out, if y'all don't mind. I, you know, I think y'all know we've been working to raise money for the, you know, obviously, the city's paid a tremendous investment in the Housing Resource Center. I'm happy to say that on Sunday, Ray Borkman at Beach Fellowship asked Andy Freeman and I to come by, and the church made a presentation. That's the retirement letter. Of $130,000.
Wow.
And, and in addition, Wave Church, the Friday before that, sent over $50,000.
Wow.
So we're approaching $200,000 because we've got some smaller contributions, too. And but I better give this to Mr. Spoor before I spend this. But I, I will tell you, if you see Ray Borkman at Beach Fellowship and Steve Kelly of Wave, let them know how much we appreciate, you know, what they've done. I mean, that's a huge amount of money. And I could never felt more confident about us being able to get to that million-dollar number.
What do you think about recognizing them?
We're, we're going to do that. If what we're going to do is, there's a foundation being formed. That's, this is where that money's going to go, and they're going to come back with recommendations on how to do it. Okay? Great, absolutely got to be recognized. Totally agree. Any other comments?
Just one. I noticed an article in the paper, and I don't remember this being brought up when we had all our health insurance discussions. Something about by the school board that- board that, that if they make no further changes, their plan will constitute and qualify as a Cadillac plan upon which additional public funds will have to be expended to pay the tax penalty. I'd, I'd like to get some more details on that and whether or not that same kind of, we find ourselves in that same situation. I certainly, hopefully, that we don't have a health plan that causes having to pay a penalty, especially when our people are struggling for health insurance themselves. But I was kind of surprised by that article that's true, but it seems like the school board was acknowledged and it was true. But that never, if it was highlighted during our discussions, I missed it. I went back and looked at my, my paperwork and I didn't see any reference to vulnerability to Cadillac plan tax, but.
It's, it's very minor. And if it happens, it'll happen in 2018. And we're trying to take steps to make sure it doesn't happen.
That's all I have.
Amelia?
Okay. I would like to take this time to mention, I know they don't want any praise, but Barry Frankenfield, right over there, from Strategic Growth Areas, really came up and stepped up to the plate when I was working on the African American Culture Center. I sat with him. I mentioned the vision and so forth. And in no time, he came back with ideas of, of the conceptual plan and so forth. So that tells me the caliber of people we have. And then he has a new young lady, Emily Archer. Am I saying her name right? And she's just on board, but she stepped up to the plate and got working. So between her, Barry, and Doug, we all worked together and pulled this up. And if there was low revision, he did not mind saying, I have it. And sometimes within the 11th hour, he had things. So I just wanted to mention
Thank you for giving that.
What, how blessed we are to have, you know, staff like this.
Thank you for saying that. Appreciate it. Barbara?
Council comments, not liaison reports, but we did have an ag advisory commission meeting last night. And one of the reports was from Public Works, Phil Cotter, who reported on the three days that they staffed down at the Ruhr and Barn to, and invited property owners to come down and, and talk about their ditching situations to provide information to staff. Because this is a pretty major issue with folks. And the report, I thought, was extremely favorable. They felt that they did get a lot of good information by coming down there and actually talking with the property owners and, and getting some insight into, to how they saw the ditch situation and, and things that they are now able to feed into the process that perhaps they didn't know about before. And seeing these guys over there, I just wanted to thank you for letting the staff come down and spend that time. They felt that it was a time well spent and, and it certainly gave people an opportunity to voice their concerns. And I appreciate y'all doing that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we'll now go to the agenda review.
Alrighty. The ordinances. Anybody have any comments on any of that?
No comments. I'm voting no on item four. Note that item two is actually in Lynn Haven District, up in Beach District.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
[inaudible].
It's a Shannon, I'm telling you.
All right. That, that all the comments on ordinances? All right. Under planning, Oceana South, Commerce Center, Rose Hall, Mrs. Kane?
I have not heard anything from that, sir, so I'm fine.
Item two, David S. and Teresa A. Italiano, Rose Hall.
I've not heard anything from that either, so I'm fine.
Three, William Phelps Land Tech Resources, Inc. and Kyle Ellis Enterprise Holdings, Beach District, Mr. Earn.
No issues with that, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Four, Haffey Boxes, Lynn Haven LLC and JLV Properties, Rose Hall. Rose Hall's big today.
That's all about Rose Hall today, yeah.
I've not heard anything on that either, so I'm fine.
Barbara, trade you. Number five.
Number five.
I think we'll probably have some speakers. If I could just give you some information now so you'll have time to look at it before you get in the, in the meeting. These are, and you received these by email this morning, but in case you didn't get a chance to print them out. In red on, on these are the conditions that we're gonna be looking at. And of course, you may change any of them or all of them or none of them or whatever. But this is what the staff has worked with, with me and to respond to some of the concerns that we received from the community. So I'm gonna pass these around. And, and I do want to just kind of address a few, in a way of explanation, so that you'll kind of know where we are. And I thought it would be very helpful
I got it.
If you have this nice colorful rendering of the lot proposal so that you can follow it a little better. It's three pages. The top page is the overall plan. The little page is pretty much concentrating on the area that seems to be most in controversy. And then the landscaping materials that'll be used. So I just thought this would be helpful for you to be able to see what's being proposed as you follow the discussion.
Has the community been informed of all of these?
Yes. They actually, they, they have a copy that they received, but only received these suggestions from them the end of the week, last week. And we, we kind of put in as much as we could of what they were asking for. In red is what's changed or in addition to what you had in the agenda package. But you know that one of the issues is the landscaping buffering around the lot, whether it's category six or category four. And so the proposal that's on the site plan and Karen, and I just have to say so much thanks to Karen lastly for following this. If you might want to make any comments, Karen. The proposal on the site plan is for category six in that part that is Bald Eagle. And that means that there would be a fence, a privacy fence, and then this heading landscaping in the, in the buffer area.
That's by the residential.
And that's by the residential area.
Barbara, is that, is that changed from a category four?
Well, category four will be the, the perimeter. Now, the, the, the community was asking for category six everywhere. But most of these adjoining property owners, I think all but two, have their own backyard privacy fences. And so if the church were to put in category six and also have a fence, you've got that buffer area, that 15 feet in between that kind of makes a no man's land alley, which doesn't really work well. And so the, the proposal is along the areas that are adjoining the residential that it would be the 15-foot landscape buffer. And with this added language that the community asked for, that the required maintenance gate on Bald Eagle would be secured from inside the parking lot except during maintenance, so that it can't be used as a walkway. The gate shall not be open for pedestrian access. And then landscape materials shall be planted as soon as possible along Bald Eagle Road. I asked for that part. So just as soon as they, that the building of this development would allow, as soon as they've done everything they need to do for drainage or whatnot, they go ahead and install this, this landscaping so it can be growing during the time of construction and would be, you know, a, a better shield. And then the, the addition along four, that as many of these existing trees as could be retained, be retained. Karen and I walked the site yesterday and, you know, it is a, a lot of trees in that whole area. And it does seem, seem to us anyway, that within that 15-foot buffer, there, there are, should be several trees that could be retained. And, you know, if it can be done without upsetting the drainage or whatnot, to retain as many of the existing trees as possible in that 15-foot buffer.
And the church is okay with these?
Yes. These have been passed to the church and they agreed with these. And then, let's see here. All lighting, and item eight, the community wanted to be motion sensors at night when the church is not in use. But the church did say that the lighting on the front and rear of the church building may remain on for security purposes, but be shielded from residential neighbors. Because they felt that the sensors would work fine in the open parking lot, but right around the church, they didn't want the, the lighting to stay on at night, but shielded. Eleven is, this one has been batted around throughout the whole thing. After a certificate of occupancy has been issued for the new sanctuary, this is a change from what's in your agenda. Church leadership will encourage all attending church activities to park on church property. You know, what was proposed was that, well, they could have up to 40 parking on the street, but if it exceeded that, then they should go over. But that language was put in before this additional 70 spaces were, were put in. So with 250 spaces, if this is what we go with, they should be able to park all of their cars on lot. And, and it just seemed to me that if we leave a certain number that's allowed to park on the street in there, then that gets confusing. And, you know, we're gonna have people park countless cars and, and that just doesn't seem reasonable. So we
They have a fence. They're not gonna park.
We would, yeah, don't think so.
Then they have to walk all the way around and they're not gonna do that.
But anyway, we can't say no parking on the streets. But what we, by saying here that the church leadership will encourage all of the people attending church activities to park on church property, we're conveying that we really don't want all street parking. We want people parking in the church property. And, and the pastor says, well, that had been their intent by having this anyway. So that's why that changed. And these other three are ones that the community asked to be included. That all landscaping and buffering shall be maintained on a regular basis. Debris such as limbs, leaves and litter shall be cleaned up, especially following a storm. Sixteen, that construction vehicles shall not access the church site through the residential streets. And seventeen, the existing post and rail fence located along both sides of the 2821 Bald Eagle Road site should be removed. And they agreed to those. So just wanted to point these out and, and explain. And if you have questions, I'll be
They've really worked hard.
Yeah.
Everybody's worked hard.
Everybody has worked hard, but we're still
We really have, yeah.
So anyway.
Tried hard.
If you have questions, this is what, you know, we're looking at, but you're gonna be hearing from the community. And the community, I sort of got an email this morning that they asked to have these changes to make it more palatable if it was approved, was approved, but they're still not in favor of it being approved.
Okay, thank you for your hard work. Nice job. Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemption from both meetings by section 2.2 dash 3711A, Code of Virginia, as amended for the filing purposes. Discussion, a public contract, discussion of the award of a public contract involving explicit public funds and discussion terms discussed with such contract, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711A, 29, Beach District Arena, Human Resources. Publicly held property, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or the disposition of publicly held property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or the negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711A, 3, Beach District. Legal matters. Consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body or the consultant, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to section 2.2 dash 371187, City of Virginia Beach Versity Company's 5, LLC. Personnel matters. Discussion, consideration of or interviews or prospective plans for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711A, 1, Council Appointments, Councils, Boards, Commissions, Committees, Authorities, Agencies and Appointees. Drive a motion?
So motion.
A motion in a second. Call roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Hindley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kane?
Aye.
Dr. Ross Hamlin?
Aye.
Mr. Earn?
Aye.
Wood?
Aye.
Doctor [inaudible]?
Aye.
Mr. [inaudible]?
Aye.